Call a meeting to order. We'll start with the pledge.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Connor?
Here.
Gary?
Here.
McMullen? Reed?
Here.
Mayor Beatty?
Here. Are there any changes to the agenda?
We won't need to go into closed session for like the party tonight unless there's a question that you posed by the community metrics that are on the regular agenda. That needs, that we need to be discussing closed session.
Open this door.
Go ahead, Joe.
Yep, so I'll request, anyone that has public comment for council, please come up, state your name, and you have three minutes. I'll let you know when you've got thirty seconds left.
Okay, sounds good. Just letting you know when to start.
Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Christopher Stone. I'm not exactly sure if this is the meeting I'm supposed to be in, but I was told, was talking to Ed Brozak about Marilla Park and the possible expansion of the disc golf course there at Marilla Park. I already have the quote and I've been talking with him as far as from the equipment, what I came here to briefly talk about what that entails. I would be able to supply, over the course of years we've been fundraising, we have about $1,200 left in that fundraiser, if you didn't read it, no, we put in the five trees recently last year, we're looking to do more. We would be changing the course basically from an eighteen hole disc golf course to twenty-one holes with alternate options on holes four, six, eight, thirteen, and two options on hole fifteen, creating a course with up to twenty-two unique holes and alternate tee pad options for five holes. Briefly saying, one hundred and ninety-two rounds and local events have already been played here just from events that I've ran at Marilla Park and not including the general public. Twenty-two holes also expands the capacity of the maximum field size in these events from seventy-two to eighty-eight. Ultimately, more holes means more draw to the course park, which still remains to be one of our main goals at Marilla Park Disc Golf League. What I'm asking is, with this proposal, with the quote that I'm about to send to Ed Brozak, is that the city contribute cement tee pads with these, with this expansion. And that's really all I'm here, is just to say, hey, we're, we want to donate, we want to expand the disc golf, but we need a bit of help, we have a good amount of money, a good amount of people wanting to donate and interested, but we need help with the tee pads.
You're looking at expanding it by three?
So after hole four, it would go up the bridge, or over the bridge, up the hill to that area where the dumpster is and that expansion area. And two holes would be added there with an alternate hole on the first hole option. And ultimately, it goes, you go up the trail, which there's already a trail that goes up, you play that one hole, then you go to the other hole, you wrap around the creek. It's the last hole, you head back down, you continue on to hole five. Then hole fifteen proposing is to break it up because a lot of my biggest complaint is with novice players that it's too hard a hole, and they'd like to split it up, have the ability to split it up, if possible. I'm good. Unless anyone has any other questions?
Well, I think Ed has the maya, do you sent him a maya?
Yep, it's been altered slightly and I have adjusted, I have the adjusted quote as well.
We'll probably put it on the future council and we'll let you know we're gonna do that.
Awesome, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, you can go on.
Anyone else for council?
I'll let you know when you've thirty seconds left.
Good evening, my name is Greg Ryan Daley, I'm here about Article Six on the agenda. I'm a member of the River Machines Car Club and we're asking the city for the use of Main Street for the Roamer's Car Show on Saturday, the August thirty-first. And we should continue into cruise night that evening, we think it would benefit downtown having more people up there through the day.
Any, so I know we'll just, we have that on here for resolution, but any, any questions or anything of the?
I don't have any questions.
What do you mind to again? We want to use Main Street for the car show instead of around, around the park.
Instead of the park.
So the way the week-
And it'll leave right after cruise night that evening.
The way the weekend fell is the overdose awareness walk is the Saturday of August. But with Labor Day being early, it's the same day as the car show, so we wanted to kind of-
Right, it's a Labor Day weekend, it's that would be the, the very end of October.
Yes.
Yeah, for our show tuning the street. Which is closing with a letter from Main Street.
Yes.
Alright, we'll do that, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else for public comment?
Hello, my name is Scott Peddlety, I live at six fourteen Indiana Avenue here in Streeter, Illinois. And what I'm here about is a letter I received about, let's, as you must say, opening an alley on the back of my lot. As the letter reads, it has already been okayed. One of my questions is, why weren't any of the other people whose property that joins that parcel notified that this was even going on? And I have a lot of concerns with what's going to happen when this happens, but I'm sure it's not for you people, that's more of an engineering thing. But I'd like to know why no one was informed and you made a decision without asking people whose property joins it.
So this came up, I think a couple times. Because it's already a public alley and it's planted as such.
Understood.
We were just approved to go ahead and gravel a portion of it, that's why we wanted to send the letters out before we did the work, so that people will be-
I would like to make, I would like to make a recommendation that it all be gravelled to the T or does it dead end? Then maybe some of my other neighbors will be interrupted when it involves their yard. It bothers me that the property, the request, in my, from what I've been told, the person who requested it possesses forty-two feet of runage face. I have seventy-five, plus I have whatever from the center of the street to my property lawn. I'm not happy and I object to this proposal, or this that you've already made your decision on. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comment for tonight? Alright, then we'll go to new business, item one is the mid-year financial review.
Thanks for having me tonight. Every year about this time, I try to come out and kind of give us a little deeper dive into the financials through the first six months of the fiscal year. So included in the packet is a couple-page memo essentially summary of what the full packet is. My plan was today to just kind of hit some of the highlights and then be available to answer any questions that anyone might have. Before I dive into that, I also wanted to give a quick update, we have received a draft of the audit for 2023. I just wanted to hit a couple of highlights on that as well. Our general fund ended the year with a slight deficit of about seventy thousand. Worth mentioning that in the audit, the general fund is an aggregate of a number of funds that are typically presented separately in the financials throughout the year. It also includes our non-home rule sales tax, our public benefit, our drug enforcement, and then a couple of other minor funds. So the general fund, as you typically see in the monthly financials, isolated, had a surplus of about two hundred thousand. But once you aggregate it with the other funds that are included for the audit purposes, is where we get that seventy thousand dollar deficit. So some of that deficit, we, was intentionally spent out on some capital projects, purchase of some capital equipment. I just thought that was worth mentioning, the general fund added over six billion dollars in assets last year, much of which was infrastructure. There was a lot of federal and state funding that might have been at six billion dollar total. The general fund as a total ended with about six point seven six million of fund balance, which is about forty-three percent of the annual expenditures of that fund. And then a couple notes on the sewer fund, the sewer fund showed a slight deficit of about ninety-five thousand, and the ending that position of the sewer fund was about thirty-two and a half. As far as debt, as of the end of last year, the city owed roughly fourteen billion in outstanding bonds and I E P A loans, a half and half bonds and loans. And that pension funding percentage have continued to go up, which has been a trend over the past three or four years. We've been making that hundred percent recommendation for the actuarial report, so the lease is up to about forty-nine and a half percent funded and the buyer's up to about thirty-two percent funded. Any question on any of that before I jump into the mid-year, mid-year numbers? Alright, starting with our cash balances as of June thirtieth, we had over six point eight million in cash. Compared to last year, that number appears to be down pretty significantly, we actually did this meeting as of April last year, so we're two months further in the fiscal year. Just for the record, June is typically the lowest cash balance of the year for the city because it's the month before property taxes start hitting. Property taxes come in on July, between July and December annually, so this is the last month before we start to see some of those revenues start to come in. For reference, June of twenty twenty-three, you would have had about seven point six million, which is far closer to the six point three that we have this year. Another reason for, for the decrease there, the general fund went down by about two million over the past year. Some of that is the increased expenses for the EMS service. We're getting a lot closer to breaking even on that, but we knew at this point that we would be operating at a slight deficit for getting the ambulance service up. Any balances, you can see on the page that any balances that are not within the acceptable range, they all have notes, a lot of those notes have to do with property taxes. The TIF funds are fully property tax funded, public benefit is as well. The golf course is supplemented by the general fund at the end of the year to make up for any deficit at that point. There are some large swings in specific funds that's on the next page of the memo, that those are detailed out. I already mentioned the general fund, the TIF district is actually up significantly, well, one of them is from the last year. The TIF districts are in a much better place than they have been in previous years, the property tax cycle finally caught up and we're starting to see some of those dollars come in just with the lag of how the property tax cycle works. The sewer operating and sewer construction fund, one went way up and one went way down, when you add them together, they're pretty close and that's just the way that those two funds go hand in hand. The sewer operating fund makes transfers to the construction fund for the capital projects that are going on. So that was the reason for the big swings in those ones. The MFT fund with the Twelfth Street project last year was using all of the rebuild Illinois bond money, which was roughly nine hundred thousand. I think in total, the MFT contributed a little over a billion dollars towards that project, along with all the grant funding that was received for the rest of it. So getting into the, the income statement for the current year, starting with the general fund. As of June thirtieth, we've received about five point two million in revenues of a budgeted by twelve point six, so we've received forty-one percent through the first fifty percent of the year. Once we adjust for property taxes, we've received about forty-eight and a half percent. So we're just shy, but almost right on target with where we would expect those revenues to be as of this time of the year. The only real concern is property, first of all, property replacement taxes. The state has basically said that they over, over allocated P P R D in prior years, so over the past, I think it was October and the last one was July of this year. They kind of clawed back some of those overages from prior years. But they have estimated that funding, at least in the state fiscal year twenty twenty-five, so July to June, that it's probably going to be at the same level that we received this year. So it'll be down from, from these increased numbers that we had seen back in fiscal twenty-two, twenty-three. Moving on, we have a couple of charts in there highlighting the importance of sales tax. So sales tax alone is about twenty percent of the city's general fund revenues. Sales tax has grown, has grown nicely over the past, I think our chart here detailed it back to twenty seventeen. The monthly average at that time was about a hundred and seventy thousand, whereas now we're, we're up to nearly two hundred and fifteen thousand per month. So per year, that's an increase of almost half a billion dollars over the past seven years. We also have an additional chart on the one percent sales tax, that's also been up as well, so our non-home rule sales tax. That's currently paying the debt service for the Penn Street sewer, the I E P A loans, as well as, there's an annual transfer to the general fund and that covers a lot of the community development department, which is a lot of the engineering costs. On page four, you can see a comparison of six of the major revenue sources of the general fund. And you can see, it's a three-year comparison of how each of those sources compares. In general, they've all kind of been either staying level or trending up, we've already talked about sales tax and non-home rule and replacement tax, but they've all been pretty level or for slight increases on those. Moving on to the general fund expenses. To date, we've spent about six point two seven million from the general fund of a budgeted twelve point nine eight million, so about forty-eight percent. Most apartments are right in line through the first half of the year, a couple of them that, that might look out of whack, I'll, I'll touch on a couple of those. Code enforcement is trending a little bit high, mostly just due to the demolitions that were funded this year. A large, we did receive a grant for a lot of those, so the budget had increased this year. And just the, the timing of the expenditures is making that fund look a little bit like it's overspent, but it, it should level out by the end of the year. Fire department is trending a little bit high on expenses. Overtime costs have been a little bit higher than what we had anticipated they would be. And then there was also some equipment that got damaged and needed to be replaced this year. And then we also made the final loan payment on a truck that had been out there for the, I think it was a seven-year loan, made the final payment a couple months ago on that. The EMS fund, the spending is on, is right on track, mostly the cost in that fund is the contracted labor for the ambulance service. And I did actually want to dive a little bit on the, the billing side, the revenue side for the ambulance service. To date, we've received about five hundred and seventy-six thousand, we budgeted one point two five millions, we've received about forty-six percent of what we budgeted. Last year, I wanted to mention at this time, we had received three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, so we're up about two hundred and fifty thousand here to date, year over year. For that, last year, we ended with about nine hundred thousand for EMS billing. Police department spending is, is on pace with the budget. There is a fairly large amount of capital that was budgeted and has not been spent yet, which is helping with, with keeping expenses in line with the budget. Public Works, it's a similar, they've only spent thirty-three percent of the budget to date, a lot of that is capital related. We budgeted eight hundred thousand for capital and it will be spent about two hundred thousand to date for that department. Debt service in the general fund, we've paid over four hundred and fifteen thousand of our roughly four hundred and forty thousand annual payments for debt service. I think that's all I had on the general fund specifically. The other major operating fund I wanted to chat a little bit about was the sewer fund. As of June, we received about forty-five percent of budgeted revenues in the sewer fund, so slightly below the fifty percent target that we like to be at at this point, but it's still not too far off that. Adjusted for inter-fund transfers, our expenditures are right on fifty percent of what we budgeted, so right on target with that. Our year-to-date, we have a surplus of about four hundred thousand, but we did budget at a slight deficit of about ninety thousand. Again, as I mentioned earlier, we transferred into sewer construction fund for capital projects, so there was over a million dollars budgeted to transfer this year to the sewer construction fund. From the sewer construction fund, we've only spent about seventy thousand to date. There was a large amount of budgeted grant activity in the sewer construction fund this year, there was a number of different projects budgeted before that. Does anyone have any questions or want to, want to take deeper into anything in the mid-year financials? Or anything in general while I'm on here? Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. I think the bottom line is we're about where we should be.
No further questions on that, we will go into item two, Resolution twenty twenty-four, forty-two. Authorizing the execution of an agreement between the City of Streeter, Illinois and Laborers International Union Local Three Ninety-three for the period beginning October first, twenty twenty-four and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. Get a motion and second. Okay, Dave Tanner with the motion and Lucet the second, sorry. Dave Reed, I did, I mixed them up.
Connor with the motion, Reed with the second.
Yes, I did Dave and Dave and it threw me off, sorry about that. Okay, any discussion?
Well, the lay unit contract represents the smallest unit that we have, that we're bargaining with, that represents administrative staff upstairs as well as two district clerk's downstairs previously, it was a larger unit that included dispatchers. There's still some language in the contract dealing with dispatch, but it really has no effect today. This is a four-year contract proposal, so we can, you know, not have to sit down again for quite a few years if it's approved tonight. The union has ratified it, the increases are a little higher than you'll see in the other group in terms of cost of living adjustments, although the F O P contract has conversion to a new pay schedule. But these employees are relatively lower paid, that the starting wage is not that much higher than the minimum wage now, but Illinois increases the minimum wage, we gotta keep that down. We did something similar in the public works contract a year ago. And the only other change would be we inserted another step in the vacation schedule. It taps out at the same, starts at the same, but they move up at the twenty-fifth month, they get another pay. So they get that date a little earlier after two years of working. So this, this contract was negotiated by myself as well as the general manager of the union. We did very quickly look in since it's such a small event.
Any questions or comments on this one? Clear call roll, please. Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMullen?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor Beatty?
Aye. Item three, Resolution twenty twenty-four, forty-three. Authorizing the execution of an agreement between the City of Streeter, Illinois and the Illinois Fraternal Order of Police, Labor Council, forty-three-year contract beginning January first, twenty twenty-four, ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. Can you get a motion and second?
Let's move. Second.
Okay, Tim with the motion and Matt with the second.
This is actually a four-year agreement, but it starts January one, so the first half of the year, so there's only three and a half years remaining. This is a significant change for us because we're moving away from the old legacy method of establishing a compensation schedule based in large part on longevity pay. And in two thousand and fourteen, there were significant negotiations that took place to reduce the impact of longevity pay. But the effect of that was after we started hiring new officers in two thousand and nineteen, that our younger officers were significantly undercompensated in the early to mid part of their career relative to other agencies in the, in the region. And we would run the risk of losing our officers, some of our officers to other departments eventually. And it's important for us to pay market triple rate so we can effectively keep paying. The other aspect of the old pay schedule was that in the past, in the last, let's say, third of their career, they're really overcompensated relative to the market. And we still have a couple of those officers that I believe are overcompensated relative to the market. And we just have to kind of wait them out, it's hard to take a cutback now. But this is an important change for us, there's a couple of other modifications that we made in the contract. We are able to achieve a supplemental notification when downtime is being requested. There's a new Illinois law that, the Illinois payee that adds that our city employees earn more of, but we have an express waiver in this agreement. Modifications for scheduling forced overtime. Modifications to the compensation schedule for lateral hires. In the past year, I think we hired, in the last couple of years, we hired two officers, one of whom has already left from other departments. And so this structure, better structures how we would recognize prior service and, and establishing their incoming wages. We made a significant increase in the compensation pay to officers who are certified field training officers, range officers, and other types of training that they provide, the department went from fifty cents an hour to two dollars an hour. So on a twelve-hour shift, that's essentially twenty-five bucks is an additional pay to service a field training officer. Particularly important to keep that since we are hiring new officers as you know. Now, we doubled the residency restrictions previously, officers had to live within fifteen miles, air miles of the city, now we're expanding that to thirty miles. And, and I've already mentioned it, early in career officer positions. So even for the senior officers that will still be able to get longevity pay, the contract provides that longevity pay is included in their cost of living adjustment. So the established cost of, cost of living adjustments that are in the contract for those years include longevity. Which is an important aspect to keep future pension costs down. So my goal in negotiating this contract was not only fairly compensate today's officer, but to try to limit what our pension costs are going to be as they move through their career. Because pension costs have really hurt the city over the past number of years. Much of the tax increases that you levy goes to support prior pension obligations that the city incurred. You have any questions you could ask me? If you want to get too deep into the contract, it would probably be better that we talk about it in closed session.
This is a four-year contract, not a three-year contract.
It's a four-year contract because it starts January one of twenty-four.
So our resolution says it's a three-year contract, do we have to redo the resolution?
And just change it to the, to their- Yeah, just change it to their title. We'll just write that change.
Are there any questions?
So will the officers get retroactive pay to January 1st? What the difference is?
It is a subject of bargaining. We have to bargain over it. It's not guaranteed. But they will. There was one officer who retired that had already been cashed out, and he'll have a modified retroactive payment to include wages only for the two-week period, but not for wages on downtime and vacation that are already paid out. So he'll receive retirement benefits with the increase, but for the past payments, downtime and vacation time, sorry, just paid out. You need to agree to that.
Any other questions? Do you want to go to closed session, or are you ready to vote?
I'm ready to go.
Okay, Clerk Colerole, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMullen?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor Reed, aye.
Aye. Item four, ordinance 2024-26, ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a First Amendment to the Tax Increment Financing District Redevelopment Agreement. Can you get a motion and second?
Make the motion, too.
Second.
Okay, Dave Reed with the motion and Matt with the second.
Well, this is the R.P.S. project that over in Bloomington, in Oakley, and the company has informed us that they intend to proceed with the project. They're just waiting on the paperwork, the final approval from the Illinois EPA. They had to do some additional underground testing of the groundwater table. I believe that's been accomplished and it's just waiting on the state to issue the FAR letter to no further remediation letter. Once that's achieved, then they'll proceed with construction. So we need a one-year delay on the timeline that was set for the agreement. The company has a delay action. It's just a delay outside of their control.
Any comments or questions on this one?
The state right here was August 16th, 23rd.
Did I miswrite the contract?
I thought we did that this year.
They had one year, yeah, so they're responding. They're sitting up waiting for their letter from the state, yeah.
No, I thought we had this year, not last year. That's why I was sure.
Well, I had our attorney prepare all this. But it's not sure how we use it this term. So I think you got the dates right. I thought we had a script error here. We'll add a year to the contract.
My years are right together.
Any further questions? Clerk Colerole, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMullen?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor Reed, aye.
Aye. Item five, ordinance 2024-27, authorizing the sale of unsold properties by the city manager for the City of Streeter, La Salle, in Livingston County, Illinois. Can I get a motion and second?
Two motion.
Second.
Okay, Tim Gary with the motion, Dave Connor with the second.
You know, I kind of like having the opportunity to talk to council on issues instead of Jeremy all the time. This is the one, I think, the first meeting in quite a while that Jeremy has only had the one issue. But as you know, we went through a whole bidding process for lots that we're trying to sell. I think that generated some interest in other people in the community that just weren't paying attention. We have one gentleman, and he's actually an instructor at our high school, that is looking at acquiring a lot that we own. He is in the final process of acquiring some neighboring property from a private property owner to assemble a fairly large residential lot, and he intends to build a home. A small home to begin with because he's single at this point, but one that could be expanded as he moves forward in life. And so this is a great opportunity to develop a process so we can more quickly turn these properties over. Ultimately, it's still going to, with the approval of this new policy statement, well, every transaction will come back to council. Now that it may be needing every other week or twice a month, we should be able to move on these properties pretty quickly.
I can also advise council, my office has been approached by a potential buyer as well. So maybe we'll get rid of three more within the next month or so.
Public works for him won't know what to, how to deal with all the free tag they're going to have on their hands, but I'm not one of the grunts. But I'm particularly excited about this first one because it's going to generate, it will likely generate a new house. And you don't see too many of those being constructed in this area.
This, Michael, so 214 High Street, should that be on there or removed? That the one?
That's the billboard over here. So yeah, that we should probably come off. That's deed restricted. We demolished the property with a FEMA grant. So it's where the billboard sits for Hopalong Cassidy.
Yeah, we can't, nothing can be built there due to that.
So is that on the list that we're trying to sell? Because of the erosion on the bank?
Yeah.
Well, it's also more commercial in nature. I think we ought to treat those properties differently than a residential lot. And then we're good.
So yeah, I would say we could remove that parcel number off of the list, but that's really the only one that I saw that was.
We have a couple of other commercial lots. The biggest one is the Lexington lot. And I've kind of been inquiring to, but usually the uses are not the best for that location, so we should be somewhat selective. There's another lot that we have right next to the train line, train rail. On the south side, just up in there is a small one. Someone approached me a week or two ago, placing a billboard right there. And I laid out the process for getting a billboard up there. But he, you know, we want to sell a lot for just a hundred bucks and put a billboard. And is that a good piece of, or we better outcap holding that for ourselves? Particularly as he approached the downtown. I think this side is better.
Any other questions on this?
Yeah, I do just want to advise council, all the other lots that were approved for sale, all those have closed and title has been transferred, so they're on the market.
So the procedure now is since we've offered it for sale and these properties didn't sell, now we can sell them to anyone we desire to?
Yeah, you know, all of these properties have been offered for sale for many, many years. And so we kind of rejuvenated the whole process, published them. They're basically have no value. So we're just going to do our best to get rid of them under the best of circumstances.
Are we going to stick to the $500 minimum that we advertise?
I think that's where we should start, but we can't get any bites on that. I mean, if someone was going to build a house on them, that's a very good return. I think that we would be getting income back off of the property we're be generating.
We advertise that these houses are available, $500 minimum. At what date does that change to, well, we can sell it for whatever we want?
Well, that's why it's going to come back to council on each and every one. But, you know, at this point, these lots continue to just cost us money.
After the process of the bid, now we can sell it for whatever you desire. So we can say we'd like to get 500 for each, remember.
At some point, it'd be great if these lots could be sold for substantially more money than just a couple hundred dollars. But even selling it for 500 bucks, that's in the whole scope of things. But if someone offers the lot, I'll probably present that to you guys. I think the issue is sometimes people just want to buy a cheap lot to do something with the lot that's not permitted by our zoning code. And that's what I've been trying to discourage because of the whole process of creating potential zoning issue that could go to litigation if there's a disagreement in the future. But, yeah. And, you know, if we have a lot that's in a reasonable size, we can always think about in the future with a speculative house on it, try to sell it ourselves, see how the market bears. Some communities have done that, either using their high school. And I'm not saying we ought to, but, you know.
It's all ideas.
Some communities have done that.
The staff does.
I was a kid in Graves Lake. My school built a house right down the street from where I live.
Ended it here in town a while ago.
Yeah. So, I mean, there could be other things that we could do with these lots. Right now, we're just trying to sell them.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Department? Okay, Clerk Colerole, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMullen?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor Reed, aye.
Aye. Item six, resolution 2024-44, authorizing and approving an IDOT highway permit for temporary closure of a portion of westbound Illinois Road 18 Main Street and the north lane of Bridge Street, and reduction of two lanes of northbound traffic from northbound Illinois Route 23 Park Street to one lane for the through traffic in the City of Streeter and in connection with cruise night. Can you get a motion and second?
Soon. Second.
Okay, we have McMullen with the motion and Tim Gary with the second. And we'll go into discussion.
What time do they want to start the car show?
Nine o'clock? Nine o'clock?
In the morning?
Yeah.
It'll be like from eight o'clock until?
Not nine, noon is registration. Car show will run until about 3:30.
So you want the road, you want the road closed up about eight o'clock in the morning, about an hour ahead?
Nine o'clock is what we got it figured. To start at nine, as we do registration.
Right, but you're going to want the roads closed a little bit before that, aren't you, downtown?
Yes, we can. I don't want it. What time do you have?
IDOT said nine.
Okay.
So you've already talked to them?
It's conditionally approved as long as you approve this tonight.
Okay.
Any other questions? Clerk Colerole, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMullen?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor Reed, aye.
Aye. Item seven, mayoral appointments. Some motion and second to approve the following appointment for plane commission.
Soon.
Dave Reed with the motion, Tim Gary with the second. Any discussion? Clerk Colerole, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMullen?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor Reed, aye.
Aye. Item eight, consent agenda. Gets a motion and second to approve the consent agenda with a fund warrant total of $232,303.48.
Second.
Okay, Tim with the motion, Matt with the second. Any discussion? Clerk Colerole, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMullen?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor Reed, aye.
Aye. Item nine, city official comments.
I would just like to congratulate our new officer, Shane Schuler, I believe is his name?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Looks like a nice young man.
He is. Deputy Chief Wood took him down to Ray O'Hara's today to get him outfitted. I'm sure he was quite excited to get his uniform and everything and get ready to make this momentum from the private sector into public service.
Congratulations, Dan.
We look forward to welcoming him aboard.
He's replacing Hoffmeyer.
Joe Hoffmeyer, he retiring, I believe, maybe this month, August 31st.
And I have a meeting tomorrow, Zoom meeting, dealing with the school resource officer position. So that may, that issue may come before council, which would, I think, generate the need to hire another officer.
And I'd also like to congratulate Streeter Fest. What a great celebration they put on. And there's a lot of discussion earlier in the summer about that being on 4th of July. Really, really nice celebration. EJ was a big part of that. Thank you, EJ. EJ and Joe, Andy, they do a good job.
I guess we'll go, and we'll also welcome the new police dog, our K-9 officer, Beau. So we have training in September.
Yeah, they'll be going to Iowa with Beau for four weeks so that they can learn how to work together as a team. It's real specialized training. It was real concentrated.
And again, thank you to all the volunteers and people that supported Streeter Fest. Sold out of, bought your Liberty Dollar tickets, sold all the tickets this year, which is fantastic. Great attendance throughout the weekend. Thanks for all the departments who helped and get everything ready, as well as the police department who was out there for many hours in the heat, and our partners at the state police in La Salle County and Livingston County Sheriff's Offices, who also came to help and make sure that we had a safe event. Then I will request a motion and, oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I put in your mailboxes, there's going to be a mayor association dinner in Ottawa. If anyone wants to attend, I need to know by August 15th, so that's next week. Also, I am out. I still have only heard from one person.
I think Dave and I both told you, yeah, council meeting, we both said we were gone.
I know, but you haven't had me make reservations or when you're going, or how long you're staying.
Okay.
So.
I'll talk to you after the meeting.
Anyone else? Okay, I will request a motion and second to adjourn.
So moved. Second. Mayor, got it?
Dave Connor with the motion and Matt with the second. Clerk Colerole, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMullen?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor Reed, aye.
Aye. Jurts.